I'd like to call to order the February 26, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
I thought it was her.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Ms. Semirusti, here. Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrebono?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Be it resolved, pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJESA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports and discipline matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJESA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Could I get a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call to order the February 26, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
I thought it was her.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Ms. Semirusti, here. Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrebono?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Be it resolved, pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJESA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports and discipline matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJESA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Could I get a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, and let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, and before we get started today, I didn't kind of run this by any of my fellow board members, I did mention it to Scott, I just wanted to take a quick moment in light of everything that's happened in our country in the last week and a half since the shooting in Parkland, Florida. I know that there's some work that's underway on behalf of the students to put something together for April 20th. April 20th is one of the dates that students have chosen, I think this is about March 14th, March 24th, and then April 20th. Students have been engaging in all kinds of protests of all kinds since that shooting. And I just, as a board, wanted to take a moment to recognize everything that's been going on in the last week and a half and actually have a moment of silence and both obviously in honor of the students that were lost, but also in honor of the students who are just kind of rising right on up and taking control of this conversation, which I greatly appreciate. So if we could all just take a moment. Okay, thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more between now and April 20th, which is I think the date that the students here in Highland Park have chosen. And I know you guys are in conversation with Mr. Lassiter, who's in conversation with Dr. Taylor, and you know, I have great faith that we can all come together as a community and figure out ways that we can engage in this conversation.
Just a correction, it's now March 14th.
Oh, okay.
So it's been solidified, March 14th, there'll be a walkout, but we're not walking out for the entire school day. And then the plan is to get a Highland Park delegation to attend one of the rallies on the 24th, either in Newark or New York City.
With possible plans for April 20th to be decided at a later date. Okay, sounds good. You'll keep us surprised as time moves forward. Okay, Linda, we don't have any communications on the agenda, anything else, has anything else come in?
Nope.
Okay. So number eight on the agenda, we have corrections to the minutes, and this is our voting session, so we will be taking action tonight and voting on the items on our agenda. So number 18, we have that correction to our December 18 minutes. Did anybody have any concerns with that? And then the approval of the minutes, number nine, I'm just going to move those both together for the regular public and executive session from January 22nd and the public workshop and executive session from February 12, 2018. Anybody have any questions or concerns with those? No? Okay, so can somebody, let's see, move numbers eight and nine on the agenda?
I can do that. So I'd like to move that the board accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the correction of the minutes as follows, and approve the minutes of the regular public and executive session, January 22nd, and the public workshop and executive session of February 12, 2018.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. So Linda, could we get a roll call?
Ms. Semirusti? Yes. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrebono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to our student representative report.
Hello, everyone. So for Irving, the students took part in the magic of science program that the PTO provided for us on Monday. The kids learned concepts in science, including chemistry, light, magnetism, optic illusions, physics, and mathematics that were demonstrated in an energetic performance, perfect for children. Everything performed had a scientific principle behind it, and each of the topics appeared to the audience as a challenging and astonishing magic trick. The kindergarten and first grade teachers will be taking part in professional development with George Street Playhouse this week through George Street Playhouse Creative Dramatics Theater Arts Integration Residencies. The Irving staff looks forward to exploring how theater arts education positively impacts students' social and emotional growth in the early grades. These opportunities will provide imaginative differentiated learning experiences for children to develop artistic expression, expand language acquisition, and collaborate with others. This experience is scheduled for the weeks of April 9th through May 21st and is funded through the generous support of the Providence Bank Foundation. And they are extremely excited and thankful to have been awarded two grants from the Highland Park Ed Foundation. One will provide for a sensory room, which will foster academic, social, emotional, and motor development, and enhance the nurturing environment at Irving. The other grant will provide staff with books and CDs as part of the building's goal of introducing the teaching staff to culturally diverse materials. And finally, this Friday, we'll begin their Read Across America Week, and families will have the opportunity to join Irving for a whole school reading period next Monday.
Okay, so from Bardell, Bardell's international visiting students program has its second round of students visiting this week. Students receive a certificate of attendance and appreciation at the conclusion of their experience at Bardell. Bardell held its second responsive epic community meeting in February. Students recommitted themselves to the core values and vision of leading by learning, empowering others, appreciating individual differences, and doing right by others. Bardell acknowledged and celebrated the first 100 days of schools with school-wide and classroom learning activities, and teachers and students alike dressed up in character and created artwork to hang on walls and then to go home. Bardell is engaging in the Third Annual Pennies for Patients Initiative, where students have raised over $2,000 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. This event is being spearheaded by Bardell teacher Brooke Eldazoni, sorry if I mispronounce that. Bardell has acknowledged the Chinese Lunar New Year, and the halls of Bardell are decorated with students' Red Lantern artwork and other displays to celebrate the year of the dog. Bardell held its first-ever Fuse Open House hosted by Teresa Dolan and Dr. Christina Nikosia. Bardell Student Council meeting was held today. They still have a record number of 50 student representatives that continually attend student council meetings on a regular basis. Bardell students were happy to enter the Human Relations Commission of Highland Park poster contest and provide the artwork that represents the "All Are Welcome Here" decals. The Bardell Student Book Club has started to research and incorporate more books that represent diverse authors that speak to the diversity within Highland Park. And finally, Bardell will be holding its Second Annual Read Across America Parade and parent read-in with staff and students. The parade will follow Bardell's Halloween parade route, and the read-in will occur in the Bardell gymnasium.
So as for the middle school, the middle school held its Black History Month celebration on February 20th. Hip-hop promoter and producer, HS alumni David Rush was the guest speaker and presented his inspirational story to all the students. The middle school band, choir, and orchestra all gave great performances with songs all written by African-American artists. The middle school young gents introduced the celebrations, and both teachers, two teachers and students, presented works by Sojourner Truth and Langston Hughes. The middle school diversity club was honored for their work in promoting diversity and acceptance and working towards change in the middle school. The middle school also participated in the NJ Regionals of the National Middle School Science Bowl at the Princeton Plasma Physics Lab and placed fifth out of 16 teams. It was a great experience for the students to meet, watch, and compete against the best-rated teams all over New Jersey, and a total of 16 schools participated in the competition. Highland Park Middle School was represented by two teams. Team A, Isaac Wu, Jacob Marsh, Jason Lu, Johann Yu, and Richard Zhu. Team B, Christine Chen, Elliot Lee, Noah Shapiro, Patrick Zhang, and Yuchi Zhang, I'm sorry if I mispronounced any of those names. The Team A advanced around seven and placed fifth overall, where we lost a close match with Witherspoon, 104 to 94, who then went on to be the finalists. The middle school Mandarin classes celebrated the Chinese New Year by making delicious dumplings in the middle school cafeteria. The students are also hard at work on their new rap songs in Chinese that they share with a cooperating school in China.
Can we have that for middle school?
Please.
Student spotlight. Here, rapping in Chinese, please.
All of the middle school creative writing classes wrote letters to the survivors of the Majory Stoneman High School in Parkland, Florida. Students expressed that not only their sadness for the occurrences, but also gave compassionate words of hope and solidarity to the Florida students. The middle school students enjoyed their Valentine's Day dance. The venue included a DJ, light refreshments, and meal and a candy bar. Both students and staff relished to the music and festivities. And finally, the eighth grade students had a chance to discover the electives offered by the high school during the HS elective fair on February 12, 2018, in the high school gym. The eighth graders were greeted by high school students who explained the various options for music, technology, business art, and other programs. Their eighth and ninth grade guidance counselor, Ms. Stephanie Miller, will be meeting with eighth graders individually in March in order to discuss their course requests for next year.
And then finally, we wrap with the high school. The DECA Club will be attending the annual state competition this week, and they actually all left school today, right at the end of the day. There will be over 40 Highland Park students competing. The Model UN in Congress team will be sending 20 students to Mexico City this week for a four-day conference and a cultural immersion experience. We leave 4:15 a.m. tomorrow morning.
One-tenth of the majority of the table.
And delegates are very much looking forward to meeting their partners at the sister schools. We're visiting three this year instead of two like last year, visiting pyramids that are just outside the city, the Frida Cola Museum, practicing Spanish language skills, and trying lots and lots of amazing food. Student Congress just gave out their February fundraising grants to several different organizations within the school. So $500 went towards funding a school bus, not a school bus, funding public transportation tickets for the GLOW program to take a trip to New York City so they can practice their real-world skills, and both within the city and getting there. $250 were awarded to Global Awareness Group for help in funding their bracelet fundraiser that advocates for an end to child slave trafficking. And $50 went to the Saga Club for several pride flags that were to be hung around the school, kind of in connection with the various flags and nationalities you see in Center Hall. The girls' winter track-
Can you just say what Saga is, just in case anybody doesn't know the acronym? We have so many acronyms that we all think everybody knows.
Straight and gay alliance. The girls' winter track team won the Group One State Championship title on February 18th. And finally, congratulations to the Science Bowl team that tied for fifth place this past weekend. The team was made up of Kevin Marks, Elizabeth John, Carrie Lee, Noah Hartwick, and Eric Chen, who made it all the way to the ninth round.
Excellent, thank you so much, you guys.
How many kids going to Mexico?
Twenty of us.
Nice.
Including these two. So whenever you need to go.
Nice.
All right, thank you both so much. It's all yours.
Couple of shout-outs. Couple of shout-outs. You guys give the most comprehensive reports consistently. Thank you. Fantastic. Also, one of Highland Park's favorite sons is working at the camera tonight. A shout-out to John Gardner. Hi, John.
Hi, John.
Thanks for coming in. John has also applied to be our videographer for the rest of the year, so you may see a recommendation to the board sometime in March on that. So tonight, we are honoring one of our high school's favorite sons. And we're also going to be hearing about the U.S. History II with Honors Option program. So first off, I'm going to introduce Mr. Lassiter to take the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, and thank you to the Board of Education for having the high school here tonight. Just want to make one quick correction to those wonderful students. It's actually the Sexuality and Gender Alliance. They changed their name a while back, and it's not well-known to be more encompassing.
See, I'm glad I asked for the acronym.
There, there you go, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we all know Saga is more than just straight and gay at this point. How do I call up the next student? Principals aren't supposed to have favorites, but I actually have four favorites in this room, so I guess it's okay to call up a favorite. Daughter of our school, Uchechi Odeconway. I want to speak about her as our superintendent spotlight first. Come on up here. I don't need any prepared statements for Uchechi. I've known Uchechi since she was in middle school, and she's come a long way. Last year, she was actually our Student of the Year voted by all the teachers and won that honor last year. But she came into her junior year in such an impressive way that I need to just understand that this woman is all around one of our Renaissance students. She has not only started the year as a football player, not too many girls do that, but then went on to basketball season. And while all that's going on, she's juggling Model UN. She is one of the four students in this room going to Mexico tomorrow, so I'm glad she's here tonight because she just finished her drama practice for the play and was a star last year, and I'm looking forward to her performance in Addams Family. But most of all, the timing of celebrating Uchechi is perfect because she is one of our students that took on the U.S. II Honors Option this year and is thriving with it. And so she does deserve that round of applause. But most of all, Uchechi did something that not a lot of students do. Uchechi wrote a thank-you letter to the entire Highland Park High School staff that I told her I was going to share with the faculty, and we did it right on the meeting right before Valentine's Day, and it softened everybody's heart and just reminded us just how great Uchechi really is. "I never really got to thank you all as a whole. When I was young, I never really thought I would do anything in my life, or I was just taking up space. I felt like that until I became a ninth grader. Many of my teachers, previous teachers and current teachers, were very nice to me, passed down their wisdom to me. This school has not only been kind to me, but let me have the opportunity to make friends, get out of my comfort zone, give me good memories, but most of all, made me feel like I matter. I can't even fit all the thanks I want to write down, but for now, thank you. Love, Uchechi." And that's the same reaction we got in the faculty. So without further ado, I think we need to recognize Uchechi as our student spotlight.
They brought their own photographer. They brought their own photographer.
Can I get a picture with all of us?
Yellow chair, just a page.
Oh, should we take one?
Yeah. Give out the support.
You made us cry.
And so I think at this point, I'm going to reintroduce you to-
Nah, go ahead, take over, take over, Mr. Lassiter.
Just want to get the presentation started over there.
I'm going to recommend that we slide over so Mr. Lassiter can project.
I pulled it that far. And when one of the writers- I know the name. Like, hey, I'm reading Oates in 1978. He was a student teacher.
Okay, we did send out a letter inviting parents to come. Last February, we actually did a similar presentation on our whole goal of this with a promise that we would do another presentation a year later. I sometimes think that when we don't have a lot of people come out to these meetings, they must be happy with what's going on, so. Going to begin with Dr. Taylor because all of this really comes in link with our district strategic plan. We were going to have some teachers here tonight, both Mr. Gold, who's leaving at 4 o'clock tomorrow for Mexico, and Mr. Broadfoot, who's currently on the DECA trip as a chaperone. These are two teachers that have helped lead this expansion and this Honors Option, but they're doing other things for students tonight. Dr. Taylor, did you want to speak at all about the strategic plan? Or you want me to just? Got it. So we all know that the pathways to excellence is our strategic plan. I always relish the fact that we have a strategic plan. Been here for 25 years, and not until Dr. Taylor did I ever even hear the word "strategic plan." So it's great that we are really trying to focus on things we've needed to do in our district for a long time. I've always believed in mixed ability classes, being a middle school teacher, and having mixed ability classes for years as an educator, and implementing instruction assessment strategies that help differentiate the instruction for each learner is the goal that all of us have in this district. So how does that look at the high school level? Well, students are all given the opportunity for success at all levels, and an open policy to students and parents to waive students into higher-level courses exists. So if a student is not recommended for an Honors or an AP course, they still have the right, with their parent's support, to help waive and choose to take a higher-level course than they're recommended. However, our students are encouraged and recommended to take the most challenging courses possible, and then the teachers would differentiate to their needs. Sometimes that isn't always in alignment, but we always try to work very hard to give the students the options. So how has this looked in junior history and what has been our history in these courses? And so way back when, when I first was involved in administration, U.S. II Honors and AP U.S. History were about the same. And then you can see over the years, there's been a gradual movement to more students taking AP U.S. History than taking U.S. II Honors. So what we decided to do this year was to change things up a bit, to set up an on-level history course, no longer referred to as CP, because for some reason, college prep has gotten a bad stigma with the students. When they hear CP, they think, ah, that's the low-level course, it doesn't mean anything, and it's not going to challenge me. Well, CP means college preparatory. So I've taken out the term CP out of the Program Planning Guide. I've asked all the teachers not to use the term CP in referring to courses because we're a college preparatory high school. Okay? And so this year, we offered U.S. History II or AP U.S. History. And for U.S. II, we gave the students an Honors Option. That means they did not need to pre-select before coming into U.S. II in September to be in an Honors course. They could make that decision once the course started in September. We also encouraged the AP option heavily through guidance, through the teachers, to really be involved in recruiting kids and telling them that AP is a good thing. And we're doing this more and more, especially as we now have 15 AP courses at the high school, which is impressive for a school our side. We're also on the AP Honor Roll and do very well with the students that take the AP courses. They score threes and higher, and so we get a lot of attention for not only the number of students that take AP courses, but how well they do in them. And like I said, there's always been a number of students, because we've only run two sections, who would have taken AP U.S. History but just couldn't because it wasn't offered in enough sections, and they might not have been able to fit it in their schedule. So this year, we have one more section of AP, and Honors was offered this year as a result of increased enrollment and the Honors Option flexibility in U.S. II. So you'll see, we've always usually have two sections of both. This year, we ran three sections of both. And look at the numbers. Now, we may have less Honors students, but we have significantly more AP students in U.S. History. And what I did is break down for you the way the Honors Option classes look. So there are three sections, one with 16 students, one with 22, and one with 13. And I'll talk to why there's an imbalance in a moment. And you can see in the 16 section, it's perfectly balanced. Eight students in Honors, eight students in Regular. The 22-student section, which Uchechi is in, has five students in Honors, 17 that are regular U.S. History, but this is an ICR section, meaning it's an inclusion class. So the numbers are higher, and there are two teachers in the room, which also means that our ICR students had a chance to take an Honors U.S. History course. And our class of 13, three Honors and 10 Regular, a little imbalanced there, but we'll speak to that later. USAP, pretty well-balanced, three sections. And so how do the students make their choice? And the numbers don't quite add up to the numbers we have because we do have some seniors in the mix sometimes when it comes to U.S. II and it comes to AP U.S. History because their junior year, they might be overloading on science, they might be overloading on math, and they can't fit that history in, and they're only required three years of history anyway. So these numbers are lower and don't quite match because of those reasons. The number of 10th-grade U.S. I students who selected U.S. II, 35, standard. Number of 10th-grade U.S. I students who selected U.S. II Honors, now they upped a level. Eight of those students moved up a level. Number of 10th-grade U.S. I students who selected USAP. Now, we have four students that went from U.S. I to AP. That's unheard of usually. Number of- Okay? And you can see the numbers. Any additional student taking an AP class is a gain. Might only be four students, but it's four students of color that may not have taken AP in the past. How are they doing? Well, for the most part, they're doing fine. Okay? When we look at the students that began in US I and chose the US II honors option, and remember, they're going up to an honors level, look at their grades. Okay? Their current averages, As and Bs, their midterm projects, As and Bs, mostly As. Those that began in US I and chose US history AP, look at their overall grades before you look at their midterms. Okay? Their overall grades are fine, A, B, and even a C in an AP course from someone that came from US I is not a bad thing. Okay? It really isn't. AP is a tough course. It's a college-level course. Now, their midterms, please look at the phrase after it, "in line with the AP exam." The teacher has to create an exam that will give them practice before they're gonna take the AP exam. So, they're taking a college-level exam and they're still passing it. Okay? They're still passing it. Okay? Now, let's look at those that began in the honors class and what they are doing. Okay? You can see, all the honors, US I students in US II honors are getting As, midterm project, still As and Bs, the exempt, medical issue, don't need to go into it. Those that began in US I honors and chose US history AP, there's where you have your student that's not passing. It's a more significant reason, but everyone mid-year might not be doing well for various reasons. However, when you look at the majority of students, they're right in line with success. Okay? And they're all passing, even if they didn't do well on a midterm. So, you might think, well, the course isn't as hard in US II honors, and maybe there's some reason the kids are just getting grades that they're getting. And so, Mr. Broadfoot conducted a survey. A couple of his students weren't available, they were absent when he did this, but when asked if students liked the idea of an honors option for classes, eight said yes, one said no, and three didn't have an opinion, probably because they had never been in an honors class before. When asked if they think the honors option is as rigorous as separate honors classes, six said yes, three said no, and three said they didn't know, again, probably because they hadn't been in an honors class before. When asked if they would rather be in a separate honors class, four said yes, seven said no, and one really didn't matter to that particular student. Now, this is an informal survey, so I decided to do a formal survey. And so, I called all 16 US History II honors students to the library. I missed a couple, they were absent. Okay? And I got 13 that were there, and talked to them about the rigor. I gave them a real specific question, reason they selected the course, and they could select more than one. So, nine of them said they wanted the challenge and rigor. Eight of them chose US History II honors for GPA considerations, four of which had been in US I honors. Teacher assigned the course, three of them chose the course because they knew who the teacher was gonna be. Other one was worried about public speaking in AP and said, you know what, I don't wanna go in AP, I'd rather be in US History II honors. And so, I asked them two other questions that were more anecdotal, and they could provide a lengthier response. The students were also asked if the course was challenging and rigorous, why or why not? And do you believe you chose the best course for your needs, why or why not? And so, I looked at all their responses and counted up the number of positives, the number that might had concerns. Eight students said yes to that the challenging was, the course was challenging and rigorous, and described the course as being challenging enough and more work than they had done in CP in the past. Five students said no, and described the course as not having a lot of homework, which, in all honesty, we've been told not to give a lot of homework to the students this year, and not as many essays. Okay? So, some of the students actually asked for more writing, which Mr. Broadfoot will get that feedback. Students said they should have taken, or two students said they should've taken AP, which is a good thing, now they know, take on that challenge. Do you believe you chose the best course for your needs, why or why not? Ten students said yes, and explained that they feel like the extra work helps them, is a good middle ground, I am challenged just enough, and I'm a little upset that I didn't try honors before, I like the challenge. I thought that one would be particularly touching, and I felt the same way when I read that. Three students said the course was too easy, and one of those said AP would be too hard. So, really, only two courses, or two students thought it was too easy, one wasn't really sure. Okay? So, what should we do next? Obviously, we're gonna see how the kids do throughout the full year. Second half of the year does tend to be a little bit more challenging than the first half of the year, particularly in AP, as they're getting ready for the AP exam. US II honors, now they've gotten all the basics down, Mr. Broadfoot can do more differentiation with the students and take some of this feedback and give them some extra essays as well. But we will continue counseling for students to choose challenging classes. That's been my mantra with the guidance counselors. Okay? Teacher recommendations are a guide, but the waivers do allow us for changes based on student, parent, guardian input. Because the students may not be trying hard now, by their junior year, sometimes they really step it up. And so, a recommendation from freshman sophomore year doesn't mean as much when you're going into your junior year and you might wanna take on that additional challenge. Okay? We'll continue the AP expansion goal for all students interested, and in all honesty, 15 courses, we're getting pretty much to our max, but some of those courses aren't as rolled as high as they could be. And many of our AP courses, we do have two sections. There's only a few courses where we only have one section of the AP course, like music theory or computer science just began this year, but I wouldn't be surprised if we have to expand it. And we really would like to consider strongly adding more honors option classes. And so, on this note, I asked a few teachers, would you like to try this? And my world history teacher almost knocked me down with excitement. Okay? Because we've never had an honors option at the ninth-grade level in world history. And having that option within the world history class might challenge some of our ninth graders to step it up a little sooner. Okay? My English 11 teacher is also incredibly excited about the possibility and kinda already does it. The curriculum that they're doing in English 11 and English 11 honors is the same. All he does is differentiate his lesson plan based on the students and what they actually might need in the honors course. And if the English 11 course has an English 11 honors option, I might be able to balance those US II honors option courses out a bit more. Not to mention, our AP Lang and Comp class, which is a junior-level AP course, is maxed at 60 students in two sections. They literally overflow out of the classroom on certain days so they can work with their laptops in the hallway because the access point won't hold all their Chromebooks and their devices probably at the same time. So, yes, we really wanna expand this. And in fact, in Spanish and French, we've been doing this for years. Levels three through five are almost always a level three, three honors, a level four, four honors, and a level five, five honors in the same class anyway. So, saying to the kids at the beginning of the year, you know what? Maybe you wanna choose honors now. Would be better than having to make that decision last year, going into their junior year or senior year. So, we like what we see so far, and we really would like to expand the opportunity to all students.
I was actually gonna recommend that we ask questions at the seats in case you wanna go back to the slides. Use my, my mic. My wandering mic. I have a question for Mr. Lassiter while everybody's resituating.
Yes.
It's an on-the-spot question that I haven't, we haven't discussed this before.
Okay.
Terrific presentation, by the way. Thank you for the research that you did.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Lassiter's been working very hard with Mr. Broadfoot over the last two, I'd say at least two weeks, putting this together.
Yeah, about two weeks, putting this together.
You and I have discussed the positive reception that we're getting from the staff about the honors option idea. Could we be even more aggressive than what we're seeing here in our expansion plans?
I tried with a few other teachers, and I've gotta be honest, I've only focused on humanities first, and some teachers are a little wary in regards to what that might look like. Senior year, it's a little bit harder, I think, for students to, and I'll be honest, I focused on senior-level teachers after I focused on some of the junior humanities teachers. And if they haven't done this before, all of a sudden saying, senior year, you wanna opt to do an honors section, not likely as successful. On some of the other grade levels, conversations need to be had. Science and math, there's still some strong hesitancy about trying to do something like this, because differentiating in the math in particular is one of the challenges that we do have.
Perhaps some of the work we're doing at the middle school in the area, math can be a model for what you might wanna scale up.
And students coming in with that kind of experience will definitely benefit us greatly in regards to trying it out.
So, I've got the mic. Who was it?
So, the question I had as you were going through the slides, and again, thank you so much for putting all this together.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it tremendously, it's so helpful. Is there the thought, it was really, it seemed really striking, the difference between the classroom grades and the midterm grades? And it made me think that some of these students may just not be accustomed to taking that kind of an examination, and is there a thought to maybe then build that in for the students who are stepping up to one of these classes, maybe build in some sort of study skills and some sort of how do you prepare for a test like this, especially before, I mean, now we kinda see with their midterms, like they weren't completely able to show what they know on that midterm, maybe show what you know as to elementary school, but, you know, to give them that additional assistance within the classroom framework before they get to their final.
And so, let me speak to that for a second. This midterm grade for AP US history definitely needs to have a little bit more training that goes into it. Our US I honors course, though, their midterm is very rigorous in regards to the types of things that they're expected to do. A lot of document-based questions, there's always a sizable multiple-choice section, but when you take the AP US history midterm, you're trying to cover all of US history in one course. And so, that is one of the challenges, and we've even talked about, the US I honors is almost seen as AP I for US history. And so, there's definitely some conversations on how to best address the kids' needs, get them ready for this, but I wanna caution that this midterm is so different than others, this is their first real chance to get that real exposure to the test, and then they learn from their mistakes. Because the midterm's only worth seven and a half percent of their overall final grade, so it doesn't impact them in a way, as you can see, with their overall averages, they're doing fine.
Right. And I guess some of my concern also would be, though, just if this is your first big examination, when you're moving up and you bomb it, like, how does that make you feel about your ability to do this again?
The teachers do a real good job of going over the exam, talking about what they could do differently, how they should study, what they need to study, and moving forward. And we have a couple of students in here, and I'm not gonna put them on the spot, but they've experienced it, and I don't know how they've done on that AP midterm. I'm just curious and-
Like how we did on the midterm?
So, what are your grades?
How you feel about the midterm in general? How you feel about that particular midterm, because I know you've both taken it.
I think, because I have friends in A-PUSH this year, the midterm was a little different for us last year than it was this year. I think there was more, it was more heavy on writing. It was, I think, I think ours was just a multiple-choice test last year, so I don't really think I can attest to that. But in terms of the class, I felt prepared for the A-PUSH exam from the class entirely, so.
Yeah, now, I'll speak to that. I actually brought these numbers here after Julia goes.
Yeah, I think that, well, I don't remember having a problem with the midterm last year, though it's possible that it was slightly different. It's absolutely true that this class requires a lot of outside investment because you have to review an entire year's worth of history at the end of the year to take the test. And so, that can be really challenging for students, and then, but I also think that most students just aren't used to taking a test like these AP tests are, and so, the midterm is sort of this wake-up call, and then you spend so much of any, in any AP course, not just A-PUSH, doing DBQs and doing all this stuff, so that it actually becomes much, much easier. So, I think that, like, you know, up until this point, you haven't done as much, and the midterm is like a wake-up call, but I don't think it has that kind of-
I think if you, I think the idea of bringing AP for two years possibly, having A-PUSH I and A-PUSH II would actually be really beneficial to this, because if you're seeing, these scores could be better, would, I would, I think we would all feel better if these scores were in the US, A-PUSH I, like, in sophomore year midterms, and they're, that was their first time being exposed to an exam like this. And so, they were at the AP level for the two, two years instead of just one, and then, so they have more practice with the test, and so by the time they actually take the exam, it's like second nature. So, that's what I would recommend.
And so, I appreciate both of your feedback on that. Let me talk to you how this might measure up in regards to AP performance. US history, AP scores last year, 36 out of 42 students got a III or higher, that's 86 percent of the students that took the AP exam, and 50 percent of those students got a IV or higher. And so, the scores have really been good, and one of the main goals of AP, as we all know, is to get the kids, if they take the exam, because we don't require it, and they get the III or higher, then they can save some money in college. And so, we really try to push the kids to take the exam, train them to take the exam, and I'm a big believer in you learn from your mistakes, and it really helps the kids to understand, this is a serious test, I've gotta work a little bit harder than I did in the past. While I have, since this is really a junior-level focus, even with our AP expansion in Lang, it's been great. Forty-five out of 49 of those juniors got a III or higher on the AP Lang test. That's a 92 percent rate of students getting a III or higher in that particular exam as well. And so, our students did good in AP last year. We'll look again to see, did all this help or potentially impact the scores in another way? But we don't evaluate our teachers by the scores. I'm giving you those numbers, the numbers speak for themselves, the teachers don't get the pressure that they have to get the scores, because our students don't have to take the test. They take it voluntarily, and we just subsidize for the students that can't afford to take it.
So, this goes to this idea of looking at scores for next year, so obviously, we don't know scores, but we did just, the deadline for registering for AP, at least for the $94 test instead of the 100, whatever, just end, like, finished. So, do we know how many students we expect to take the A-PUSH exam relative to last year? Because, like, are these grades or whatever, or having to jump the course in that already being too much, is that discouraging people from taking the exam, or are we saying the same kind of enrollment?
I can't answer that question. You definitely put me on the spot, since the registration just closed literally on Friday. I don't know off the top of my head. And we have a new AP coordinator, who I have to ask her to figure out how she can get all that information together, but I promise, you'll have that for the next board meeting that you can bring it back.
This is just kind of out of curiosity, but how many of the students in US, in
That's a 92% rate of students getting a three or higher in that particular exam as well. And so our students did good in AP last year. We'll look again to see, did all this help or potentially impact the scores in another way? But we don't evaluate our teachers by the scores. I'm giving you those numbers. The numbers speak for themselves. The teachers don't get the pressure that they have to get the scores because our students don't have to take the test. They take it voluntarily and we just subsidize for the students that can't afford to take it.
So this goes to this idea of looking at scores for next year, so obviously we don't know scores, but we did just, the deadline for registering for AP, at least for the $94 test instead of the $100, whatever, just end, like, finished. So do we know how many students we expect to take the A-Push exam relative to last year? Because, like, are these grades or whatever, or having to jump the course in that already being too much, is that discouraging people from taking the exam or are we saying the same kind of enrollment?
I can't answer that question. You definitely put me on the spot since the registration just closed literally on Friday. I don't know off the top of my head. And we have a new AP coordinator who I have to ask her to figure out how she can get all that information together, but I promise you'll have that for the next board meeting that you can bring it back.
This is just kind of out of curiosity, but how many of the students in US, in the normal US One or US Two are likely to take AP Government? Are they at all likely or is there any possibility that they could?
Great question. Again, can't answer. We haven't even begun really, just barely scheduling the students for their senior year and having them choose the Gov. course. Our Gov. course, though, traditionally runs two sections because I need to, with about 50 total students taking AP Gov. Again, that's completely inelective now because they only are required the three years of history and that doesn't count towards one of the state requirements.
I have a question. So, thank you, and this is fantastic news, very, very exciting, I think, particularly as we were talking about this last year and now knowing the level of success and participation levels with, especially with regard to the honors option. And could you describe for us the, so what additional are the kids doing who are doing, who have chosen that honors option?
Can I add onto that?
Yeah.
And how does it work? Do they, at the beginning of the year, say, "I want honors option"? Can they move in and out of it?
Okay. So the honors option was offered to them in September. Mr. Broadfoot, myself, and Dr. Taylor actually kind of coordinated on the letter that we would give the students and the parents to consider it. By the middle of first marking period, they had to make a decision and select the honors option, so they had a chance to kind of see what the different assignments might be, what some of the expectations might be, and it also gave the teacher a little bit of time to recruit as well, some students that might have been on the fence. When they selected that option, assignments were differentiated in regards to, A, say if you have a group project, now you're the honors student, you're the group leader, okay? And you're working with your Shark Tank or your team to come up with whatever presentation, whatever project that you're doing, and coordinating all that and being the spokesperson for your group. So those that wanted to avoid the public speaking, that might have been an AP, didn't avoid the public speaking in US Two honors option. Additionally, any assignments, any projects that were given out, there was a different level of rigor expected in regards to results, whether it be more pages, whether it be more sources that you had to use and how you had to vet those sources, the expectation differed. And the teacher, and again, this is our first year, so he's still fooling around with it, oscillated between a chronological approach to history and a thematic approach. He had traditionally taken the chronological approach, but felt that that wasn't going to work, especially as he tried to pick up the pace a little bit. He realized, I'm going to leave some of the students behind, so he got to slow down the pace, and that's when he started to opt more towards some of the themes that he was looking at with those students. Of course, their midterm project, because I did stress to the teachers, I want you to try to do project-based if you can. Obviously, an AP teacher, no, you need to give them a practice test and do something in that regard to get them ready. And so all his students had projects and of course, the honors students had significantly more expectations and his results were off the charts in regards to, now, as a teacher, the best practice is to take some of your best products and use them as models for the next year's course. He didn't have a lot of those strong models to hold up to the students that were in regular US History. Now, in that same class, students could, you know, "I could have done that."
Right.
"I could have done that."
Right. And so, and so going forward to, I guess my question is two ways. One is, how can we back it up a year or two years so that the kids who are in ninth grade and 10th grade can start thinking of themselves as honors-level ability students who can do that work, as well as to have more kids who put their hand up, which is so exciting to me, and say, "I want to, I want to try that. I saw these kids do it last, you know, this year, first time," and maybe have more of them do it.
And Rob, I think some of that is going to come from what Scott is talking about, right? Like now we're not tracking it all in Bartle, where historically we have. Now we're looking at the middle school, right now, the only thing that's tracked in the middle school is math and we're looking at doing, so, I mean, Mike said this as well, if you're sending me kids who don't already have the stratification system in their DNA, basically, then he can do way more starting in ninth grade. So that's kind of the, that's the goal, right? Is that we just, we start them from pre-K and they're just, they're all used to being together. They don't, they don't hit that part where they, that point in school where they go into the stratification system.
Right.
And I just want to make sure, Ms. Brown, I did address your question too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. I just want to go back, okay, I am a little upset that I didn't try honors before. I like the challenge and so, I just got to harp on that because I don't know which kid wrote that. I can imagine, because I know which kids were in that room in front of me filling this out, but that speaks volumes. And so when I asked, again, my ninth-grade World History teacher, "Do you want to do this?", and she about knocked me down with excitement, that speaks volumes to being able to start those kids with this right away. Our longstanding belief, and those that know me know I'm a social studies teacher by background, has always been in the social studies department, we need to keep our kids as mixed as much as possible. And so that's why World History, when we had a World History honors class, I was a teacher then, so I can say this, we all undermined the heck out of it so that it would fail because we knew it was bad for kids. The book that we were forced to use was ridiculous and the course didn't last. As soon as the teacher who got hired that year to teach it decided he didn't want to necessarily stay and he left, we just took that opportunity to say, "Well, maybe we shouldn't offer the World History honors anymore." And we got rid of it. And so that opportunity in the ninth grade will, will spread like wildfire. By expanding in our 11th grade to show the teachers, hey, if we do this, you know what? Classes are going to be more balanced. You're not going to be packed at the seams in some of your AP courses because we'll be able to spread them out with more sections. Okay, that's what happened in US History. It was two sections that were packed to the brim. This year, it's three sections, well-balanced. And so it will really help in that regard and that should help fuel the fire to move forward and give those kids those opportunities to get that challenge.
Just in terms of college transcripts, so, like, there's a big, there's a, there's a big emphasis put on making sure that you have honors and AP classes on your college transcripts. What is this class going to look like?
It says US Two honors on their transcript.
Okay, just wondering.
Okay, and so if they take the English 11 honors, if we offer it with an honors option, they will get English 11 honors on their transcript. And in fact, the waiting goes right along with it. Okay?
I had a, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to actually piggyback, really pick off of Ann's questions. I'm not sure if you answered it or not, but if there, if a student is in the HP honors option just as regular, can they move up during the course? Did you say?
Thank you. No, that was a good question and I did kind of, I talked about how they choose it. So if they're, missed the deadline, it kind of makes it a little bit difficult to then, because they would have missed all that challenge going into second marking period and third marking period. So we really try to stress, once you make that decision, you can stay there. They do have a little bit of a window to say, "You know what, I don't want to do this now," and to back off of it, but no student has done that yet. Okay?
Well, that's the way you set it up. That's what, that's what we talked about last year. And you're following those guidelines, which is fabulous.
Absolutely.
It's great.
I'm so grateful for this presentation. Thank you.
My pleasure.
And my question is, I guess, more about the faculty because you said that they were, like, super excited about it. And I guess specifically the English faculty is what I wanted to know more about because when I decided on a major in college for myself, I chose comparative literature because I loved history and I loved literature. And so that was a good way to bridge those two things. So what you were saying about wanting to have as much diversity in the classroom in a history class, for me, that translates also to English. And, you know, having more diverse things to read and more diverse perspectives on that reading, to me, that makes sense. So I just wanted to know what you and perhaps the faculty had to say about that, especially for the ninth graders coming in.
Can't speak to that just yet, okay? I'm still working with the faculty, trying to make sure that I can get everyone on board. We also have a new humanities supervisor, so we have to have that conversation. And the last thing I want to do is force it. And so I'd rather pilot it, show the success, and then demonstrate that this success is going to have an impact on your class and let the teachers kind of buy in that way.
And I guess that was, if nobody else has a question, maybe I'll wrap it up with that question.
And I will add one thing, just remember, English 11 honors onboard already, okay? So we have the chance next year to potentially set some groundwork for really spreading, spreading the fire.
I'm wondering if you have any sense for what the dynamics are like in the classroom? I know we had some students last year who were sort of very resistant to the idea of a heterogeneous class. Others were, were, you know, excited about it. I know you said you try to, the teacher tries to sort of mix people up in groups so there'll be some honors kids and some not honors kids. Do you feel like the kids are sort of getting along and?
So, in honesty, one of the students that responded, out of all the students I formally asked, did say that they didn't like the two teachers who were in the room and that they would have preferred to be in an AP course. Okay, so...
They didn't like the two teachers, huh?
Yeah, there was one student, but out of all the students that we asked, put that out there. And I know what that means and we all know what that means. And so I guess go back to, now, this is them telling Mr. Broadfoot directly, "Do you like this?" Most of them said yes, okay? "Is it as hard as you expected?" And some of them may have been those students who had never taken an honors course and said, "Oh, wow, you know what, I could have done this a long time ago. It's not as hard as I expected." Okay? And if they wanted a separate, seven of them said no. Okay?
And I feel like I just totally miss something. There's two teachers in the classroom?
For the one, one section with ICR.
Oh, the one section.
One section with ICR.
I see. And that now has a reputation as being sort of the, which is not supposed to be.
All I'll say is that some of the students that stepped up in that room, again, were students that were classified students.
Yay.
And they now had an honors option because we can't, I'm sorry, we just don't have the manpower to run an ICR honors.
Right, right, right.
Section. Okay? When you split it up and honors is available in all the classes, now we do.
Yes, that's so good. So, anybody else? No? No? Okay. So then the last thing I'll ask is, is there, do you have plans to take your presentation on the road with the staff to just kind of put the bug in everybody's ears, so to speak?
Absolutely going to share it now with everybody. The two teachers that were involved with it know it well. I haven't shared it with the whole faculty. I wanted to work with Dr. Taylor, make sure the board is behind it, and then absolutely will take it on the road. Expected more parents here tonight, invited a whole bunch of them, but this will be available on our website and I will encourage parents in my next letter to look at it. And if I get the sanction from the board, like I said, all it takes is a course proposal to say, "Next year, we'll be offering English 11 with an honors option and World History with an honors option."
I don't, I can't see any objections sitting around the table, so.
I didn't think you would.
The PDF version of these slides is in the board drive in the superintendent's folder, so you can mass distribute it if you'd like. Mr. Lassiter, thanks again. I just texted you my thanks. And that concludes my report.
All right. All right. Again, thank you so much, Mr. Lassiter. We really appreciate it.
Very much.
We appreciate all the effort and the presentation. Okay, so we'll move on to our board committee reports. Michelle, you go first.
So the first item as usual is...
And ladies, you're leaving us, yes? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
We have a fantastic, is there somewhere that you, like, things get posted on social media for the whole class that we can follow you guys or your adventures?
We have an Instagram and a Facebook, like, the club does.
The club does?
Yeah.
Can you tell everybody what it is in case?
We can try, it's @HPMonk. We can try to post as much as possible.
@HP.
M-U-N-C.
@HPM-U-N-C.
M-U-N-C.
Okay, so anybody at home who wants to follow our fabulous students while they're in Mexico?
We also, last year, brought a presentation to the board, so I don't know if that's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Time would be awfully exciting, you know, like, to like, see where you guys are.
We'll have like, geo trackers.
No pressure. No pressure.
Commentary.
Well, not, we're not that extreme. Just, you know, a little picture now and again would be fun.
Have fun.
All right, have a wonderful time.
Thank you.
Get some sleep.
Good night. Good night.
Okay, sorry, Michelle.
No, not at all. Okay. So, first item as usual is approval of field trip requests, and we had gone through that before, last time we met, so if you have any questions, I'll just keep moving on. Number two is the approval of the HIB incident report for November and...
And I'll just mention now, we're going to write, we're going to change the language in that a little bit for number two for the November reports. We're going to change the language to, "I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to accept the findings of our special counsel, David Rubin, regarding the HIB incident report."
Thank you.
So that's how that will read. The number two.
Can you hear the word?
Yes, I absolutely can. Okay, sorry.
No, not at all. Moving on to item number three is the approval, approval of the HIB incident report for December. Nothing is changing on that one. Number four is approval of the university graduate students with one addition from the last agenda. We have Gabriella Jovanetti as a nursing student being placed with our nurse, Janie Mazur. And now we have Emily Tenenbaum, a PhD student, placed at the high school with Mai Ping Yang for science. Number five is the approval of new courses at the high school, starting for the 2018-2019 school year, and those two classes are Mandarin One and Two for five credits apiece. Number six is the approval of the 2018-19 district calendar. And I know that we had lots of discussion last time, so I'm anticipating more discussion on number six. Number seven is approval of a full day of handle with care recertification training for the following staff on February 22nd, which I guess this is retroactive. And number eight is approval of the teen center director observation rubric, which I don't know that we have any information on.
The template's in the board drive.
Okay.
This standard operating procedure, we've been using a template and we haven't had the board update, actually approve it. We, we really should, so I'm backpedaling a little bit, making sure that we cross our T's and R's. All evaluation tools are approved by me only after I've collaborated with whoever's impacted. And in the case of bargaining units, of which our teen center director is not a part of, we actually have to have the bargaining unit officially approve among its constituents the evaluation tool. So anything that you get by the time it got to you has been vetted. One clarification I want to, actually, I want to make about the calendar. We, I actually took the board's input about the calendar specifically to make the parent conferences at a certain...
October, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
We, if you can look at the calendar, I'll pull it up now just to clarify specifically what it now shows. We...
Right.
Well, actually, it was the board's recommendation that we go to end of October. I do need, I hope by now the board has had a chance to look at what we are finally recommending, and it is to maintain parent conferences during the week of teachers break, teachers convention week. The Teachers Professional Relations Committee met and felt that that was still the best week for us to have conferences.
So that would be the week, I'm sorry.
The week of the teachers convention.
And that was the...
Which is November 5th, 6th, 7th. And I, that was the board's ultimate, if I recall, decision because it felt that that week was already spent on Election Day and teachers convention.
Okay.
The other note I need to make is something Mr. Magazinacott, which is a typo, we fixed it. So that'll be updated before it goes out to distribution.
Okay. So we couldn't make a dent in October? So we couldn't make a dent in October, huh?
Nope.
Okay. So hang in there in October.
And February 5th is Chinese New Year, right?
Yes.
And that's, can we just indicate that on the calendar?
Yeah, should have been there. You're right. Got it covered.
And there's days in March that are parent conferences, but those are not detailed under the month of March. Maybe we should label those?
No, they are.
No, it's very fine print.
Oh, maybe it's very, very fine.
Very fine print. You just have to enlarge the page.
Ours look different.
Okay, so mine's-
What I'd like to make sure is that we label every cell that's been shaded or filled in with some kind of a design.
No, it's a PDF, I'm just viewing it.
Okay.
Let's see, under March it has-
Yeah, this is the one I clicked on, I guess this is the one.
And I plan to distribute the calendar this week, pending board approval.
I didn't share.
No, I know.
You wanna like, dig a look? Yeah, let's dig a look. This is in the drive for this week.
So we're not doing blackout days, we're just doing individualized, just, you know, students that are getting, you know, permission to not take exams or do homework on those days that might require-
We haven't done those in a while.
In a while, yeah, yeah.
I do direct the teachers not to assign homework on holidays, and I need to remind everybody of that on occasion, if you catch my drift.
Right. I was thinking, because Hanukkah is December 2nd, I think, that begins on December 2nd this year, so I don't know if that requires a reminder, or if, you know, the fall Jewish holidays require any kind of labeling on our calendar, just to remind our staff.
Well, I'll likely do that in September, this is a matter of course, and we do have three days off from school for the Jewish holidays in the fall, so-
Oh, in September, yeah.
We should definitely be abiding by that directive.
Okay. Yeah, I know that Hanukkah shouldn't be a problem, but it's just, you know, so far from Christmas this year.
Yeah. Sometimes it's a good thing for, I'm, I practice, I'm Jewish, so it's a good thing, it's not a bad thing. Depends on whether you want a space out here, gift giving.
Or else you have families with mixed religions, right, and then it's the whole month of December.
That becomes, yeah. A month-long, serious holidays.
All right, so we're good on the calendar?
It's good, yep.
Where are we? I'm sorry, I was out of the room, so-
End of curriculum.
I am done with curriculum.
All right, you are done with curriculum, okay. Does anybody have any additional questions for Michelle?
Not necessarily for Michelle, because we talked about this during the meeting, but going back to Mandarin 1 and Mandarin 2 for the high school, did we have any community input on whether or not we wanted to have Mandarin 1 and 2 in the high school?
No, I didn't get it. I mean, we decided last year we'd make a commitment, if we're gonna do this, pending interest, we have 50 students in middle school taking the course, so I feel like we, and 12, I believe, are eighth graders, so we do, we do owe it to them, to have a follow-up course.
And at this point, we're not losing, we're not, for high school, we still have French.
Yes.
Those who were enrolled in it will continue their studies by the time, through their graduation.
If they want to.
That's right, they could switch out if they want.
I mean, there's only, what's the requirement? Is it two years? So, I mean-
I think most take longer, though, if they're college-bound, usually.
Yeah, usually it's three, for college-bound students.
Mm-hmm.
But you could have a student who's taking two years of French and decides, "You know what, I want to mix it up, take two years of Spanish from Mandarin."
Yeah.
Choices are good.
All right. Rob, you good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we will move on to finance. Mark?
Yes, thank you. Before we go through the list of agenda items, I had a few small things to report on. I think they're not small in terms of scope, but they, it won't take much time. First is the budget, so we've had three of our four budget meetings. The state did put off when our preliminary budgets are due, until March 29th, and so with Scott's and Linda's guidance, we've put off our fourth meeting and possibly fifth budget meeting until March 29th, uh, March 19th, excuse me, and then again on March 21st. By then we'll have, we should have state aid figures, so we'll be able to actually work with the numbers that we will get, as opposed to trying to put a budget together this week or next, or even the week after, without knowing what the state figures will be. And the board meeting, I don't know if you were gonna bring this up, Darcy, the board meeting needs to be changed, right, from our original schedule, from March 19th to March 26th, so that the board can vote on the 26th, so that we can then hand the preliminary budget into the state on the 29th.
Right, so that March will look like February did, where we have a two-week break in between our meetings, instead of a one-week, one-week break.
Right. I do want to say, this is my third year in this position of talking about budgets, and we've always talked about how hard the budget is, and we've got to make it, we've got to make a budget that works, and we've got to balance it, and so on. This year is, is more than extra hard. I want to give a couple of examples. One is that the state has told us that to plan for a 16% increase in medical insurance costs, and that's, that's by both contract and by just the state providing the, the health plan, the health insurance plan for the vast majority of the districts in the state, that's the number we have to live with, and that 16% is an increase on about a fifth of our, sorry, a sixth of our budget. So a sixth of our budget is going to go up by a sixth, and in effect eats up virtually all of our 2% cap, just that one item, and it's not at all under our control. In addition, you look at, there's going to be four or five items today where, in finance, I don't know, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, around there, where we talk about students going into special ed placements with costs, in some cases, in excess of $100,000. We also have no control of that. The one thing we do, we don't also have control, but we have to match or follow is this 2% increase in the, in the budget, which has a little, a little way, but we, it's very hard for us, is what I'm getting at, it's very, very hard for us to stay within budget. I would call this a, an austerity budget. We've been meeting and, while the committee and the administration, and I'm sure the board is looking to hold class sizes to where they've been, which is one of the kind of last places that we can get some money from, everything is on the table. This is just a very, very bad year, and if, the budget is going to have to be much more severe and austere than it has in the past. So I just want to alert everyone, perhaps the state aid figures will help us. The state aid in, in real numbers have gone down over the last 10 years, so I don't know, I don't know if that, they're going to help, we'll know soon. But we're trying our best to keep the educational programs, and, and that's, that's the best we're gonna do. It's not, not a good time. Okay, on to more cheerful items. Demographics. This is the one-year anniversary also of the demographics report, and I did email the board a report I put together. It's, it's a little technical, but it's interesting, and it was interesting for me to work on it, and I discussed with the finance committee, which has been very, very concerned with the numbers that we got last year at the demograph, from the demographer, which showed as many as 2,000 students in the district in 2021, 2022, and, and would be really pushing the space that we have in the buildings, not to mention the financial impact and ramifications of that. So I went back to the report. I found some problems with the report, you can see it in the follow-up that I worked on and presented. The biggest problem was some double counting of students who had already started in the district, because at least one of the, one of the, one of the new developments has been in place and started taking new, new people into units in 2011 and 2012. Those were counted as just a basic increase by the demographer, as opposed to an increase due to new building, and comprised a good percentage of the increase we've seen over the past four or five years. So, again, read it, I don't want to go into it in great depth, but I concluded that we should expect an increase of between 120 and 180 students to the current approximately 1,620. So we're talking numbers that are much, much lower in the 1700 to 1800 students from the 1,620, as opposed to as many as close to 2,000 students. And it's, it's a big difference, it's a big difference in expenses, and it's also a big difference in, in what do we do with the configuration of our classrooms to fit that many students. The third item is much more mundane, and that is, there's been, had been reports of a recall of some products from Pilgrim's Pride Company. They make chicken products that are used in cafeterias, school settings, and so on, and Linda gave me the information that Pomtonian, which is a food service provider, uses Pilgrim's Pride, and that this recall done by Pilgrim's Pride might have affected us. In fact, it didn't, we have a, a letter from the company, the, the plant that produced a small run of, of potentially bad food was not sent to any of the Pomtonian uses and would not affect our students or our cafeterias. So I just wanted to report that out before going on. So that's a short report, tried to keep it short, before going into the agenda items. So, on the agendas, one, which is our bill list, has been added, we have two added, which is the bill list from January 16th to January 31st. The athletic bill is the same, three was in our preliminary workshop meeting, and four is a new list from the end of, beginning, middle of February to the end of February. Item five and six are the same, that's the cafeteria bill list. The travel reimbursement was in the workshop session, number seven. The eight, nine, 10, and 11 are all, I'm going to call them boilerplate, treasurer's report, board secretary's report, no, no budgetary line items have been overextended, sufficient funds are available to meet our obligations to the rest of the year, and budget transfers from one line to the other. Item 12 is contractors. We discussed two weeks ago, the first two. The third item, the, is the pay for the musicians for the Spring Musical. The next item is educational evaluations from Psycho Educational Consulting Group. Next item is nursing services during the DECA trip, and the last item is, is the approval for a occupational therapist. Items 13, 14, 15, is what I was referring to before, are new or changed special education placements. One of them, which is item 13A, at the rate of $17,930.40, is actually a move, and it's a, it's a decrease, believe it or not, of approximately $50,000. So even though the number's very high, we're actually saving money, and that's an example of how high the special ed placements are, and really, nothing we can control very well. 15 is a settlement on a special ed, special ed agreement to, for a child to go to another school. Items 16 and 17 are acceptance of grants. The item 18, we discussed, or went over last time, was a submission of an update of our three-year preschool program to the state. Item 19 is the request for proposals that we have to do this year for custodial grounds and management services. Item 20 is a tiny increase of .3%, not 3%, but .3% in some school busing for handicapped. And item 21 is grants from the Highland Park Education Foundation, educational foundation, in the amounts listed below, to four different programs in our school, for which we are very, very thankful. And that's it.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much, Mark.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Mark on anything he reported or anything on the agenda? No?
Quick question.
Yep.
About the occupational therapist, is that someone who's providing services during the school day?
Yeah, correct, we had to outsource because we maxed out our, our current employee services.
I see, okay, thanks.
Okay, if nobody else has anything for Mark, I do just want to say a quick thank you for taking that deep dive into the demographer study. I haven't had a chance to read everything that you provided to us, but I look forward to doing so and will do so, because this is something, as you know, that I've been gravely concerned about, and it seems like the direction that we're going in taking our dive into this is maybe things aren't going to be looking as bad as we thought that they were going to be looking, which is extremely hopeful, because we, as I, as I see it, we don't need another massive issue on our plate right now.
What I wanted to say is, there were not only some errors in the report on double counting, but we also have the year behind us, so we can actually count what's actually happened in the last year. And so, the report talked about an increase from 1640 or 1650 at the time, number of students, to a bound of like, 1680 to 1720, but we've actually seen a decrease in students. That's the thing that tipped me off, something just didn't make sense, and, and there was, there was an ability to count the number of students that we're getting from these, from these developments, and you can, you know, you could, I got a, Linda helped very much, the redacted list of just addresses, so I could, you know, process that on the computer and get, how many students are coming from the developments? And the numbers are there, if we hadn't had the development, our numbers would be down probably by close to 100 students now. So, and, and then you, they had birth rates in the report, so you could look at birth rates over the years, and our largest grades right now are, two of our three largest grades by far are our 11th and 12th, current 11th and 12th, but the early grades are much lower. So you can see this pattern of, of kind of a wave motion of children through the district. It is, I believe, will be much less bad than we thought. I mean, you know, it's good for, to get some good news, and more stable for us.
Right, and the good thing is that we've put these kind of like, methods in place, for lack of a better word, to kind of look at this year by year.
Yep.
You know, we've already been collecting the data, so we can keep an eye on it, and if it's, you know, if we start seeing this huge upward trend, then we can, you know, panic, but right now it seems like we, we don't need to panic.
And my conclusion, my last conclusion in the report is that the finance committee should be doing this every year.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
I mean, an outside demographer is fine, once in a while, we can do it ourselves, it's not very hard. We know where the kids are coming from, so it's something I hope to be able to do next year at this time as well.
Great. All right, thanks so much, Mark.
You're welcome, thank you.
So let's move on to personnel, Judy?
Okay. We have a few, a few new things from last meeting, but I'll just run through the agenda and highlight those as we go along. Number one, acceptance of resignation of a para in Noria's Molina. Number two is, is new, it's another resignation at the middle school, it's a Schedule B position, the girls' spring track coach. Approval of the change of the videographer, we were talking about that. We have a replacement teacher over at the middle school for special ed. We have approval of a swim competition chaperone, number five. Approval of full-time para at the middle school, number six. This is also new, the next one, number seven, approval- This is also new, the next one, number seven, approval of a para at Irving School. We're going to move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a full-time para, Kyle Mullenasky, at step one. And number eight is also the approval of a maternity replacement para, Audra Zadati. So, that is on the agenda. Number nine, we went over last time. We just have the addition of one other after-school program, Assistantette Bartle, Amira Wright. Number 10, I'll give a little explanation. We had a substitute at the middle school for the orchestra and strings, and because the position is, was open, the sub actually was a certified music teacher. So, we have decided to hire him to finish up the school year. The personnel committee felt like because we couldn't do a full search mid-year, the contract will just be through June, and then we're going to advertise the position to see, you know, what kind of pool of candidates we get. Scott's also going out to do a job there at both TCNJ and Montclair, which are both, you know, known for their music ed programs. So, we'll see what happens with that. But we are covered through the end of the school year. So, that's good news. Approval, a couple of approval of Schedule B positions on number 11. 12, let's see. Oh, yeah, Mr. Gold has moved up a step because of his master's degree, so that is on there. More source for teachers. That's pretty standard. And then, I think everything else is, I don't think we have anything else new. Approval of paras for the Conversation Cafe, Urban Dragons. Approval of staff for writing lesson plans, more Dragon subs. Nothing really different from what we talked about last time. Let me just glance through. Yeah, I think everything else is the same that I reviewed last time. So, I don't have any more additions.
Okay, great. Any questions? Anybody have anything for Judy?
I was just going to ask about the swim chaperone because over a lot of years, we have not paid. Those have been volunteer parent positions. I'm wondering, did we not have a parent available to volunteer?
No.
Did we ask for it?
Not in this case. At the, Mr. Post has, he has a background as a swim coach, so we thought it would be the ideal person to partner with the students in this case.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Number 10, the music teacher of orchestra and strings. Was that also done with student involvement?
It was. We had a parent, student, several teachers, supervisor of humanities, Mr. Lassiter.
Okay.
And then I interviewed the candidate in the final round. And by the way, was very upfront with the candidate about my position. I pointed out that he may be, I'll be in the mix for the next round, but because we had conducted this search somewhat mid-year, I wanted to go out and give it another go.
Oh, okay, because this does end June 30th.
Yes, so he can reapply for the position when it opens up.
And then, going along with that, is there a movement at this point to have a replacement for the fall concert that was canceled happening this spring?
Yeah, I believe the concert was already held.
Oh, okay.
If it wasn't, it's coming up.
I got to talk to my son then if it was held.
I didn't tell you. It's good.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything for Judy? No? Okay, so Ann, you want to walk us through the policies?
Yep, not too many changes. For first reading, I'm recommending that we approve 3281, inappropriate staff conduct. Where's Keith? He's not around.
When, you know, policies are coming up that impacts the teachers, you know, how we can loop Keith in early in the process, you know, like last time he had the feedback for us about, well, the K-6 teachers don't email with, you know, so.
Yeah, we did fix that, but yeah, there's probably other things.
Right, right, right. Yeah, but just moving forward as we're looking to work on, we know that there are policies that we're going to be working on that have a direct impact on staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Get that input. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions about the policies that we're moving tonight for first and/or second reading? No? No? Okay. Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
And you're planning another meeting soon?
Yes, very soon.
All right. So, we'll move on to equity and excellence. Dominique?
Hi. Okay, we did meet finally. It's my first time meeting with Equity and Excellence on Valentine's Day, February 14th. Yeah, so, but we got out in time to enjoy Valentine's afternoon with our family. And really, the first item on our agenda was for the benefit of myself being a new member, and that was looking at the comprehensive equity plan review process, which I know all of you all are already familiar with, but I wasn't. And I just wanted to get some, you know, information as to where we are in the process. And so, it was helpful to hear from Jen Knapp in terms of what the areas are that we are, were found not in compliance in and what's being done in those areas. So, I'll just share kind of the update that Jen gave because I don't need to get into the background necessarily on the plan. Is that correct? I can leave that part and move on to the areas that Jen Knapp discussed that are in review currently. The first area is equity and discipline, which was, as Jennifer said, initially an issue in the high school primarily, but is now sort of spilled over a little bit more into the middle school as well. So, that's the first area in which we are under review and are taking corrective actions. And the second area is underrepresentation of girls and racial minority students in gifted and talented and/or advanced classes. So, Jen said the district basically is, needs to show progress towards improvement in each of those two compliance areas, and she will be updating the equity plan with current information on what's being done in the district in terms of those action areas. So, she did share a couple of updates. She said, again, actions are ongoing, but in looking at equity and discipline, we talked about the professional development and training opportunities that are ongoing for the leadership team and the teaching staff. Dr. Taylor did share some pictures, I think, at the last board meeting, showing some of the sessions that are, have already occurred and some of the really deep dive discussions that are happening amongst the staff there and the leadership team. She also talked, Jen also talked about the work being done by committee of students, teachers, and administrators and board members as well to review the disciplinary code. And that's ongoing. And also to make sure the disciplinary code reflects a restorative justice-centered model that the school district is taking as a whole. So, again, not a whole lot to report in terms of results necessarily in these areas, but the work is ongoing and we really are in the initial stages. The second corrective action area we discussed, access to higher-level classes, which, I mean, Mr. Lassiter really just spoke to and just really went into complete depth of, in that area. We only skimmed the surface in our discussion in terms of Dr. Taylor sharing with us the U.S. History Honors options and what was happening in terms of, in terms of our concern. And that is how were minorities and underrepresented groups taking advantage of the additional classes? And we were very encouraged to see the numbers and to know that there is growth there. You know, we did express concerns about making sure that students who are taking that class and who it may have been a stretch for, whether it was the honors or the AP, and Darcy, you kind of spoke to this, what kind of support, you know, would they need to help them sort of adjust during the transition. But, I mean, even looking at the presentation, it was nice to see that as a whole, I think all the students were really sort of clustered together and doing well. We didn't see any outliers, per se. And I think the main area of concern was the midterm exams. I will say that we talked about the importance of still being able to figure out how to provide support. And I know Dr. Taylor did say that obviously there's budgetary constraints, and so there really aren't the funds to be able to do a whole lot where that's concerned. But one thing we do want to consider is possibly grants and to get support for some initiatives. Because as we do expand and make these courses, these high-level courses available to more students, and particularly, again, with this committee's concern in opening up access for underrepresented groups, I think we probably will find, and we talked about that, some kids who are going to need more support. We just wanted to be prepared in the district to see what we can do to help those students. So, then in conclusion, Jen Knapp just advised us on the timeline. She said that the statement of assurance will be due in September, and it must show that the district is continually reviewing its progress in the corrective action areas. The next full comprehensive equity plan must be written and submitted in 2019, 2020. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. So, the second discussion item was the cultural competency audit. Dr. Taylor shared with us the report findings from last year for committee members to review. He highlighted, we didn't really get into the meat of it, but he did share it with us, and we'll follow up on that discussion in our next meeting. He highlighted some of the professional development opportunities around cultural competency, which is really cool to see, including most recently, a panel discussion and a Q and A at the high school on cultural competency in the classroom. And this panel, which myself and a few other board members were able to be there for, was really a coming together of local educators and community activists. There was an educator from the Perth Amboy Schools. We had our own Ashton Burrell there, a rabbi, I forgot his name, from Rutgers University, who's also a local or a nearby resident. And we had.
Ms. Ozon White.
Yes.
Is that me?
So, really, I was impressed with just the perspective and the exchange of ideas and information that all of the panelists gave. And what happened was they all did kind of an opening discussion of bringing their perspective from whatever their cultural background was and also pairing it with their experience as a student, either growing up in a not-so-diverse school setting and transitioning to, let's say, predominantly white institution, which was what was shared by many of the participants. And it was really just interesting to hear their perspective and to share some little nitbits, nitbits from each cultural background, right? So, we heard a little bit of the Chinese background and how teachers can take into account the Chinese cultural and ways of relation in terms of how they interact with their students and their parents. I didn't stay for the full discussion, but I do know that there was an extensive question and answer period, so the students and the teachers and staff that were there were able to really have an exchange with all the panelists. So, again, I think it was, it was very productive and it really did, I think, help push that work forward. Doctors Taylor did talk about the leadership team also reading, or beginning to read a book called Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain. So, that's also incorporated into their work around cultural competency. Then another topic that came up in our meeting was if there are any culturally competent curriculum for Black History Month. The question was raised, and Dr. Taylor did state that there is no specialized Black History Month curriculum, nor is there one for the Holocaust. She did mention that as well. But aside from the segments that are kind of embedded into the broader scope of the curricula, there really is no dedicated curriculum in those areas. So, Dr. Taylor did mention that since high school curriculum is up for redesign, it's a good time to consider ways to implement those specific curricula and diversify it for different learners. And the last item, or second to last item that came up, was grading. We discussed grading inequities such as vast differences in the number of tests or assignments given by different teachers. Dr. Taylor is in the process of getting feedback, I know from staff and teachers on that. But this did lead to also a discussion on the dependence of internet access for homework assignments and how in some classes we'll see that more so than in others, and just the impact that has on students who may not have that access at home. So, I know that's something that will be followed up on as well with the staff. And we also touched on minority recruitment, which is something that I know we talked about briefly in the previous board meeting. But one area we did talk about tapping into is just the Greek organizations and possibly using their vast networks to, you know, address reaching more minority potential teaching staff here. Challenging area, and we acknowledge that, but I know Dr. Taylor is working some of the various networking opportunities and just trying to, again, hit HBCUs, you know, the Greek organizations and visit as many of the various panel discussions that may go on to as well at Rutgers. So, we're going to try to just be as aggressive as possible with it. But it's an issue that a lot of districts struggle with, and we recognize that. And then the last topic I want to get into, which is really exciting, is the anniversary of desegregation in Highland Park just this week, actually. The website has a dedicated page to the, well, 2018 does mark the 40th anniversary of desegregation in Highland Park. Let me back up and say that. And if you go to the homepage of the HP Schools, on the right panel there, the first bullet point actually, is where you can get to the dedicated page, which provides a link to a whole host of newspaper articles from the time period documenting the process of the state mandate for desegregation, the town's response to it, and, you know, the ultimate decision that was approved by the state to actually close one of them elementary schools so that all of the students would be able to go, would go to all of the schools. And the three elementary schools would not be segregated based on where students lived, which hence led to the gross imbalance in terms of the racial representation in each of the schools. Also on that site is a link to a PowerPoint presentation, I believe it is, that gives a timeline, an historical overview of desegregation in Highland Park. So, very, just a good wealth of information. I think we talked about, you know, how do we here as a town, and we're grappling with, you know, all of our initiatives to expand access and, you know, really talk about equity and the discipline imbalances. And I don't know if we all had a chance to, like, at least skim through the articles, but there were a few things that really struck me. And, you know, one of them really was the fact that if we, I think the percentages were, the racial imbalances were obvious. But what also occurred after the racial imbalances were fixed, right, by desegregation, was that the classes became, you know, racially imbalanced with tracking. So, you know, and that kind of mixed ability or not-mixed ability grouping. So, you know, I just, and that was brought out in one of the articles, and I just thought, well, here we are now, you know, on the 40th anniversary and really taking this issue head-on, which is a huge testament to how far we've come because, you know, there's one thing to say we've desegregated, but what's happening within the classrooms? So, I don't know if anyone else, you know, picked up on some of the ways that what happened.
Here's mine.
Oh, oh, well, yeah, all your posts.
I went through.
The other thing I would, I would say too, that just, if you looked at some of the articles that were a little later too, after desegregation and after the schools were actually reorganized, I noticed there was a period of racial discord as well in the high school, I believe it was primarily. And, you know, and it just goes to show, that was also the time where there was a huge amount of, like, everything was tracked, you know? Everyone was grouped by, you know, quote-unquote, "ability." So, I could imagine the racial imbalances in terms of the classes did not help in terms of the peers, right, relating to each other. And so, tonight, we talked about, well, what's happening in these classes where we have mixed ability grouping, and how does that help, you know, the students feel about themselves? And I think it's just awesome to see this progression that we're making.
I was fascinated to read all of the articles.
Yeah.
I just sat down, I made myself read them all in one go, just to kind of like try to get the entire overview. And one of the things that struck, stuck out to me is so much is exactly what you just said, and I pulled it out, it was an article from actually 1988.
Yes.
And in 1988, so 10 years after the actual desegregation occurred, there was a task force, this is what the name of the task force was, the Task Force on Concerns About Racial Balance and Achievement. And in 1988, the people who sat down on that task force all agreed on the statement, all children, if given equal access to knowledge, can learn. And here we are in 2018, another 30 years later, still trying to figure that out. So, people in this same community 30 years ago sat down and formed a task force to try to deal with it, deal with this, with that agreement, the same agreement that I think we all sit around this table and share, but we haven't tackled it in 30 years. So, I can't think of a better time to do it than right now. And the other thing that I thought was really interesting, there was a, one of the other articles was a really long, the other thing, one thing that really struck me is how much reporting there was. Like, holy moly, wouldn't it be amazing if people were at? Right. Just made me realize how far we have fallen in terms of journalism, but that's another whole story. But the gentleman who was the president of the board in 1940, it says he wrote a history of the Highland Park, Highland Park School, the school, the public schools of Highland Park. Park from 1885 to 1940. And he actually wrote, there's a sentence that says that he found that the children were able to attend schools in their respective neighborhoods, and the parents could confine their school interests among people of their own surroundings. So, that's where we were in 1940. Like, that's, that's, right. I mean, but that's where, how these schools were built, right? I mean, the schools were built, the kids were placed, and that was the attitude, like, we're just going to keep ourselves in nice little pockets of people who look like us, and we're very comfortable that way. That, that's how we like it. And then, we went to 78 where the state came in and said, you know, it's, it's interesting, because I think all the times that I've heard about Highland Park's desegregation until we really started diving into it, it made it sound like this was something Highland Park did ourselves. We didn't do it ourselves. Like, the state came in and said, hey, guess what, guys? Guess what you're going to do? Like, this was.
Well, we didn't even have a Civil Rights Act until 1964.
Right.
So, I mean, the guy in 1940, I mean, that was 25, that was a quarter century before that. And, and, not, not to excuse it, because there's no, no excuse, but if you, I mean, over, over time, there has been a lot of.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a fascinating trajectory to look at in our town. Like, I mean, it's interesting to see that kind of played out in all of these articles. And that it took that long, I mean, one thing that I was kind of heartened by is that even though it took the state coming in to do it, it seemed from the articles, like, it was happening in lots of local districts at the time, because the state was doing this all over the state, that the resistance here seemed to be a lot less. You know, like, in other communities, there was like real backlash, and, and in Highland Park, it seemed like the town really just kind of came together to figure out how to do it. But then, like you said, we, we may have done it, but then we just kind of recreated it in this different.
I don't know if it did.
It did a pretty good, it did a pretty good job compared to many. It wasn't, I mean, I lived through that, and it wasn't perfect.
Yeah.
The big problem is that with three community schools, and everyone wanted their school not to be closed.
Right, right.
And in fact, we've closed two of the three elementary schools. But it, I would say, it wasn't perfect, but it went better than most places.
And one of my big takeaways, Mark, was, well, not big takeaways, but one of the things I noticed was, like, one of the big fights was about transportation, you know? Like, there were kind of proponents of, like, well, let's just take a few kids from each of the schools and move them around. Let's not, like, completely put everybody, you know, because it's interesting to look at the different options that they had available to them, right? I mean, that would have been the kind of, like, in my opinion, obviously, worst option, is just take a few kids and boost them from here over to there, and then we don't have to spend as much money.
Even in, keep in mind, even in the, in the 90s, we had, in this tiny little town, school buses taking our kids.
But that was a result of this.
Yes.
I mean, that was, that was, you know, the outcome of, you know, having done it the way that it was done, which, you know, I agree with, I mean, that was the only way to do it.
They'll say the budget for it.
One, one option.
No, but what I, I'm sorry, but what I was getting at was, at that point, the, the amount that we paid for Aidan Lou, which now, we were just talking about this in a budget meeting, we pay almost $1,000, or it is, it's like $1,000 now, that we just pay, right? We don't get anything back from the state for that.
Well, we get transportation, which includes.
Right. How, how much of that?
A tiny percent.
A little bit.
At that point, it was $250, and 90% of it was refunded by, was, we got from the state. And so, I can, I'm sure it's not 90% that we get now.
The amazing thing, though, when I said it went okay and better than most, the amazing thing was that if you had looked around this town, and where the, let's say, the money was, and where the board lived, and, and so on, in, in those times, the school that you would have thought had the least chance of being the, the one school would have been Irving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Irving was the school that was, was left.
Right.
And Hamilton, on the north side, was sold, and Lafayette was sold, and there were a lot of unhappy people, but it happened. It made it through, and it's something to be proud of here, that this, this community 40 years ago could do that. And by the way, I just wanted to say while we're on the topic, that 1988 statement that you read, I was on the board that made that, that made that statement and had that commitment.
Mark had hair at the time.
Very little, very little then.
Oh, no, you didn't.
Very little then. But, but.
I was a sophomore in college.
Well, look, look at my Facebook page, you'll see some old pictures. But, but that board that I was on was very, very, very committed to that phrase, "All children can learn." And what happens, and it's, it's a lesson for this board, and it's a lesson for the community, people lose steam.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's turnover and change, administration boards, and focus goes to something else, and it completely loses steam, and you go back to the old ways. And that's, not to blame anyone, but that's what happened over the years.
Yeah.
But you would think that would have been a given, even then, you would have thought that was not.
As much as people wanted to change it, there were just, there was, there's.
Resistance.
There's resistance and forces for the, for, we've done it in the past, let's keep doing it this way. And there were forces to keep it moving forward in directions which weren't good.
Now, some of the things that we're doing can be institutionalized, like the work that Mr. Lassiter is doing, we're codifying, and so that should stick around unless anybody comes and tries to subvert that. It's the professional development that we're doing to change the mindset, that'd be my concern, if there's a lack of continuity. You could easily, I would imagine, lose steam there, no?
Sure.
Sure.
You should, you have to, you really have to be willing to put the energy into it, like this, this, this honors option that took, that took so much energy for the board and the administration to put this one class in motion, to do that, to actually do it. And it's just hard to be constantly, there's other things happening, you know, you don't get state aid, and this happens, and that happens. You just have to keep the constant pressure on to improve it, because it will just fall back to the old ways.
And the other thing I really, my other takeaway from this was, at these different junctures where things were happening, the amount of community involvement that was brought to bear to make these things happen. And I think we really, I mean, I think that's why I'm glad we're having this conversation now, at the beginning of 2018. I think we really need to look at the different ways that we can get that level of community involvement again.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm a little disheartened, I have to say, to see that no one turned out tonight, because I know Mr. Lassiter did send out a letter.
To every high school student's parent guardian.
Yeah, you know, so, I, I don't know if we take that as a good sign or a bad sign, or a sign, I don't know. But I think it means we need to put our thinking caps on about how we're going to get people to engage on this topic. And some of the, you know, some of the things that I noted in here, you know, was, you know, back then, they engaged the PTOs, you know? They had PTOs and board members actually went out into the community, had meetings in people's homes, you know, almost like teas, you know, like when you're campaigning. You know, we may need to do stuff like that to just get out and have the conversations. If people aren't going to come to us, then maybe we need to figure out ways to go to them and, and have these conversations, do it through different organizations, do it through post-op, do it through the PTO, do it through where, you know, however we can reach parents to have these conversations, we need to sit down and have the conversations. And, I mean, I know I'm willing to go out and do it, and.
It's a good sign, it's a good sign, I'd say, that, that people weren't here to complain.
Right.
You have to remember, this all started with a lot of un, very unhappy parents in the audience.
Right. Can I, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think they were going out into the homes because they had to, right? You know, they had to get this, some plan approved, so they had to get the buy-in. And the fact that we don't, as you said, have this sort of, you know, public presence here is a good sign, which we're all acknowledging. But I'm just wondering, are we in a place now where we feel like the, the community as a whole is pretty much behind this? Do, you know, do you think that's the case, or no?
I don't, I don't know. The whole community is. I think this is a community that's going to be divided till, till time's end. I just, it seems like, this is such a diverse community.
Yeah.
In so many ways, including philosophical thought. I might be wrong about that, but.
I'm just wondering why we're, you know, and I'm not looking for any issues, but I'm just wondering why you're not seeing that just yet, or maybe you are in other ways than not the public.
It's resistance.
Yeah.
I think we will see it, we've got some other bold ideas coming down the pipe.
We've continued to hear stuff about tracking, concerns about that here and there.
Yeah, especially with math, I think that I've had plenty of conversations about.
Right.
You know, parents concerned about that, and their first concern is math. But I'm afraid to say that, you know, the silence is deafening, you know, meaning like, parents are maybe happy with what they've seen us do over the past few years. And unfortunately, you know, when that happens in the world of, I'm going to call it politics, it's because complacency sets in. And then, you know, when something arises that irritates people or upsets people, that's when they get reinvigorated and more involved. So, those can be kind of like the silver linings. But it would be good to go out into the community, and I know that when we ran the first time, we had said that we would hold, you know, things like campaign teas, but it's not so easy to do, and it's a struggle, you know, sometimes just to do the work for this meeting, and to not, you know, to, to schedule other meetings outside of, outside of this. But one of the things that you read actually made me think that maybe it's not as different as we'd like to think. Because I know, I have family that recently moved to New Jersey from Staten Island, and they were looking for a neighborhood that they would fit in. And it wasn't about race, it was about politics. They wanted the kind of neighborhood where, you know, people took care of their lawns, and people had the flag flying outside, and they just had this image. And it turned out that, you know, what they were looking for was, you know, some kind of politically conservative type town, where they wouldn't feel like outcasts. And so, I think that people do tend to live amongst like-minded people, you know? And that's not what segregation is, that's quite the opposite. So, I mean, that's, that is what segregation is, it's not desegregation is what I meant to say. So, yeah, it seems like we always find ways to organize ourselves into groups. And that idea of being ostracized is really, you know, you don't want to feel fearful in your community. I unfortunately see more of that as I get older, not less. I, I don't know if that's one of the reasons why people, you know, might not be coming to the meetings, you know? They feel like my opinion isn't going to matter, you know? This board is one, one mind, and I'm not going to disagree, I'm not going to have any chance of being heard.
Right. So, Mike's invitation was to the, to the students and their parents to come and listen and share their experiences. And we would like to hear people's experiences, and so, maybe that's opening up a can of worms, and, you know, maybe there would be some negativity to it.
I like worms.
That's fine.
All right.
We'd like to hear it, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think, as you said, Darcy, it's about being proactive, really, especially going as we go through the process, right? And knowing that there will be kinks and bumps, and, but really knowing, contextualize what are our kinks and bumps. You know, we can do the research and see what happens when schools and districts do track, and how to try to avoid some of the pitfalls. But I guess a lot of the issues will be very specific here, even to Highland Park, in terms of what we may see.
Yeah. And, you know, from the research I've done, and I'm sure from the research you've done, like, this is what happens in, in districts that desegregate. I mean, you resegregate inside the school. It's not, this is not, we're not new, we're not special, we didn't, we didn't create this, you know? This is.
Like I said, they're always going to find, people are always going to find a way to reorganize.
Right.
Around like-minded people.
Right. So, we have a lot to work, a lot of work to do this year.
Yeah, it's worth doing.
So, that's it there. The last item really on our meeting agenda was just scheduling, and we talked about aiming to have bi-monthly meetings, so I will be sending out an email on that soon.
I do have one follow-up item, brand new.
Okay.
Piggyback off the point you made about the SNAP trying to find reduced costs for folks to get on the internet. So, she did finally hit something. Altis, Altis, which is a company, I believe, just purchased Optimum, or was cable vision.
New name.
Has a, an offer, and Ms. Knapp is distributing letters tomorrow to those who qualify for free and reduced lunch. The letter will read, it's just very short, I'll read it out loud, "A company by the name of Altis is offering a great opportunity to our families who qualify for the National School Lunch Program. You can receive Altis USA's high-speed internet service for $14.99 a month." And then, included in the letter will be the press release, a copy of the lunch determination letter that has to be presented, and instructions on how to apply. So, it's a small start.
Yeah, I mean, high-speed internet by itself might, what, be, what, $50? $80? I don't even know. What would it be?
Through the company, it's 80, for the first two years.
Wow.
Yeah, so, it's a pretty good discount.
That's a big discount.
Yeah.
It's, it's something.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. So, that brings us to public comment. Keith, you got anything for us?
Oh.
You know what to do, so I'm not going to go through my whole rigmarole. I don't think anybody's going to tackle you on your way to the podium. I think you're good.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Keith.
Keith Presti, Highland Park Education Association President. Just a couple of quick things. I just wanted to go back to the calendar and just offer just where we were coming from. In fact, I think I heard the board say that they didn't want to have additional weeks of impact with the conferences and the Thanksgiving, all that stuff. So, we felt like to just impact one week completely was better than three weeks, so that's why most people recommend it, to go back to attaching it to the teachers convention. As far as the policy, electronic communication, thank you for hearing what I said last time. I would just add that, in the, in that same section where you're talking about emails, it says, "Students' district email address, if the student has one." So, then the question is, what if they don't have one, I guess?
Should we, do you think it'd be helpful to specify, then the other email address may be used, or then the student's personal email address may be used? Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the question, I guess, people would have, is like.
Should I just not do it?
Can then you just not email the student?
Ah.
Or is there another means of communication with that student?
Very good point. So, maybe that was a first reading one, so I will propose a change to that one, to make that clear.
Okay.
If that's, I mean, the board can obviously discuss that. Yeah, I mean, we can change it between first and second reading, there's no problem. So, if you, if you come up with a, like, suggested change, language, whatever, send it to Ann.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
And then, the other thing that, that some of the members brought up when they reviewed the policy was, the policy's not specific to apps that staff and students use for different communication, like, there's the Remind app, there's Band, there's Edmodo, there's all these different things that people use. So, because they're not really social media, there's a social media section, so I don't know where the board is on that, or what needs to be.
And how are those being used? Like, are those approved? Did teachers approve those with their building principles?
If a teacher wants to use Remind, Mr. Lassiter will approve it likely, and we just, that's it, moves forward.
You know, I think I tried to suggest that that be covered in the texting section about whether, you know, it applies to texting, whether it's by the native texting application on the phone, or a third-party application. But maybe you have a suggestion for making that more clear? I mean, what is a third-party texting application? And Remi, I know, you know, Blooms isn't exactly a texting. We get in prob, we get in trouble, like, listing them out, because they change so quickly, or. But is there a better way to describe it? Like, communications apps, or something? Like, Blooms isn't actually texting, it's, you know, it's a little app you get on your phone, and teacher sends around photographs, or whatever?
Yeah. I mean, these are great things for us to think about, but between now and, I guess, second reading and stuff. So, potentially, it could be addressed in the cellular telephone section, except it's not specific to, you know, it can be on the phone, it can be on your iPad, it can be on your computer. So, and then, something else that I just thought of, oh, because primarily, the, the policy is about, you know, specifying what type of direct contact a staff member can have with a student, and under what circumstances, and what, under what programs, and stuff like that. So, you know, it's very specific about personal social media, but, and I think I might have said last time, the staff has social media accounts for their classrooms, whether it be a Facebook, or an Instagram, or Twitter, or something. And, you know, and we have been encouraged to use them in the district, which I think is a great thing, because that's where our students are right now.
Right.
So, so obviously, we're using one that's specific to the classroom, I'm assuming that that, you know, is okay with the policy. However, everything now has some form of direct messaging attached to it.
Right.
So...
Okay.
There's that possibility still of a direct message between a staff member and a student. So...
All kinds of room for misinterpretation here. We certainly didn't mean to rule that out. I think we, we took out the, there is a proposal to have texting only be allowed to groups of students, but then it was thought that that was just going to be too cumbersome. If someone needs to say, like, "The bus is leaving, where are you?" So, yeah, we need to deal with the direct messaging thing. That's a lot of language to think about. Thank you.
Sure.
So if you want to, if you want to email me any suggestions you have, I will also come up, try to come up with my own, and circulate those. But I'd love to hear your suggestions, if you have any.
Sure. Yeah, that was just some of the stuff that was coming up as I was talking to staff about it.
So I, I mean, I wonder if, next time we have a policy meeting, and we decide that we're going to propose changes to a personnel-related policy, we should just, you know, hit you up with an email, and let you know. Would that be like, one way of getting in touch with you, earlier on?
Yes.
Okay.
Use your Remind app.
I'll use my Remind app, yes, to direct message you at your personal email.
That would be fine. Thank you. And then, on a more serious note, I just would like to say that, you know, people were very, you know, obviously, as everybody was, concerned with the incidents that happened in Florida, and, you know, there's been a lot of, from the people that I've spoken to, concern in the buildings between, you know, among staff members about, you know, security, and, and some concerns that have come up. So, I just want to make the board aware of that, and also that, you know, we would like to be in the conversation of anything that we, we might see potentially, you know, a problem, or recommend. I'm sure there are people on committees of different kinds, but just saying that, I have heard a lot of concern in the buildings. So...
Hey, Keith.
Yeah.
So, we have a safety committee, and I've moved the meeting from March 29th to, I think it's the 13th, 14th, 15th? I'll have to look at my calendar, but it's a couple of weeks ahead of that time. The HPEA has representatives on the committee. J.D. Mazer is one of them. I can give you a list of his names.
Yeah, you can give me the names that are on that committee.
I think it'd be helpful if they can relay those concerns to the committee. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
And then, on a kind of positive note with that, Nicole Rizzo, who is our Assistant Director for the musical, saw on one of her Facebook page, I guess, about, from a, an alum from the Snowman Douglas School, who is an actor, who was reaching out to people, and said that the drama club is very important in that school, and that they were, they would love to see some support and encouragement from different actors, school, drama clubs, theaters, and stuff like that. So, the idea that has come up in the drama club is to dedicate a full page in the playbill with a picture of our cast, with an inspirational quote, and have all the cast members sign it, and then we're going to send it to the drama club there. So I thought you'd like to know that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Thanks, Keith. We're always so glad when you're here. We're lone, lonely when you're not. I said, we're always so glad when you're here. We're lonely when you're not. Okay, so we will move on to our board action items. Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction?
Before we get to that. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
I noticed an error on the agenda. We did not copy the resolution to approve the DOE DPR file from the last board agenda to this one.
Oh, dear.
So I'd like to write it in to old business.
Okay.
It's not a new item, in that the board discussed this last week, or, I'm sorry, last meeting. We just left it off the agenda.
Where was it last time?
It was under my report, superintendent's report, on February 12.
Okay.
So, Ms. Havela and I are recommending we place it under old business.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty. Okay, so, Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items?
Yes. I would like to move items one through eight.
Right. And with the change to number two, as previously noted, and I will give Linda that language that we read in.
I think eight is also an addition from last time.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Sorry. Where's my microphone?
Miss Imarasty? Yes. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
So, yes for one, and two, and three, A, and B, and D, and E, and abstained from three, C. And then, yes to the rest.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Abstained on five, and yes to the remainder.
Okay, finance facilities. Mark, could you move that for us?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through 21.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All right, seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call? Miss Imarasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, Judy?
I'd like to move items one through 23.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call? Miss Imarasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
And, Ann, policies?
Yes, I'd like to move items one and two.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Again, seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call? Miss Imarasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to our board liaison reports. Getting a little late, I think we're all a little tired, so we'll just kind of cruise through these. Scott, do we have anything from Joshua Chen?
Meetings tomorrow. Josh will be attending.
All right, so we'll hear something next month. Michelle, any action with our HPTV folks, or...
This'll be really cruisy. Yeah, there's nothing, nothing from either one of those two.
Although, we, I did get an interesting email from Gary, right? Did you get that too?
I did, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah.
I tried to find it, and I couldn't, couldn't locate it in my email.
Let's see. Yeah, he emailed us about, like, a possible collaboration with the folks who did the Backpack Full of Cash movie. Right, but then it seemed like maybe things fell through a little bit, but then he was, get back, get back.
I didn't get any follow-up or confirmation, so...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so hopefully, hopefully he's putting together something.
Yeah.
Sounds like Gary's got something up his sleeve, so...
I guess I was waiting for something...
That would be kind of cool.
Material to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that sounds exciting.
Yeah. All right. Rob, HPEF?
Met last week, and yes, so we did approve four grants from the Ed Foundation. Thank you. They're also planning their spring fundraiser, which is going to be in May. I don't think it's been announced yet, so I'm not going to steal their thunder, but it should be exciting.
All righty. Judy, anything from the Commission for Universal Access?
Yes, so I went last week, and I just wanted to follow up on something I discussed last time, but failed to follow up on. So, remember, I was talking about the fact that the commission was open to people who wanted to apply for grants, teachers that wanted to apply for grants. And so basically, one of the functions of the commission is to partner with the schools to facilitate physical and social inclusion of individuals with disabilities. So basically, they're open to hearing any requests from teachers that fit that. So if, if it's a, a program, or something that they need for their classroom, or something that would enhance physical and social inclusion, they're open to that. So they meet normally, if it's not a holiday, the third Monday of the month, at 7:30 in Borough Hall. And anyone that wants to, you know, bring something to them comes to the meeting. Now, Monique did that last year with a summer, a summer arts camp, and presented, and then the commission was able to help fund that. So it's really a great opportunity if there's something that a teacher has an idea about. I looked on their website, they do have an email, which is universalaccesshp@gmail.com. Tara, kind of Tara, is the chairperson, so you can also reach out to her. But you would need to, anyone that's interested would need to come and do just a short little presentation.
Right. So is that, does Scott have that information to disseminate to the principals, to disseminate to the teachers?
Yeah.
But you can give it to me, I will.
Yeah, that would be great.
That's great.
Okay, thanks, Judy.
Sure.
Does Rebecca have anything for us from the...
Yep, she placed the files in the board drive, so please take a look. Rebecca's dutifully been attending library meetings.
Fabulous. Anything you remember that you can share with us?
No, nothing, nothing of light. I know that they're in the throes of discussing the relocation of the library, but nothing's been decided.
Okay. I don't have anything for shared services, although seeing this did make me remember that I got a letter from the mayor saying, "You've been appointed to this thing, come and sign your letter," or something, and I haven't done that, so maybe I should go do that. Maybe if I go sign my letter, maybe we'll have a meeting. Maybe that's what I was supposed to do.
Could I pop in with a question about the library? Is the, is the district taking any kind of position on the relocation of the library? I mean, I always, speaking for myself personally, it seems like it's well-located now, right next to the high school, where, you know, lots of kids go there after school. I was just wondering if we will be piping up in any of those discussions.
If, if there's a room or a place for them to be?
Well, no, if the, if the library is going to be relocated, I mean, you know, we've heard in town about some of the possible relocation spots, or one in particular. And I'm wondering if the district is going to express a view, or take part in discussions about the wisdom of the relocation?
Look, I have an opinion, but I have no knowledge of where they're thinking of relocating. If it's something...
I think it's on Main Street.
It's something worth considering. Yeah, I mean, I can look into it.
That's not, oh, that's, that's different now?
The meeting was, the meeting was tonight, and my wife attends the meeting. She's a member of the library board. I've heard nothing from her about a relocation. She's been at all of the last dozen meetings. So perhaps they're having, I shouldn't say this in public, I won't. So perhaps there's some discussion going on that's not being done at the library board. We were assured by various people in town, on the other boards, that the potential of moving the library to, to Raritan between Second and Third had kind of gone away, because, for a variety of reasons. I don't know if that's true, but I, I, I'll, I'm going to check when I get home tonight. The, any movement of the library from that building that would cause the building to get turned into condos, which was the plan of that developer, is against the laws of the state of New Jersey. That, that building is on a residential A lot.
Right.
And condos aren't allowed there. And there's a number of neighbors around that building, including me, who would plan to take legal action if the town tried to do that. But who knows? I mean, anything's possible.
I just wonder if we, as a district, want to express any sort of view about that. I mean, I do, I know there's just a ton of kids that go to the library after school.
Yep.
And, you know, although, between Second and Third Avenue on Raritan, whether or not that's still under consideration, that's not far, from the perspective of a normal human adult, you know, we know that middle schoolers don't always want to walk, and if it's not convenient, they might not go. So...
Or bad weather.
Or bad weather, or, you know, whatever. But middle schools, oh, we know what they're like, because we were them.
I think we'd have to wait till we, you know, I mean, I think everything is so nebulous right now, it would be impossible. But, I mean, this is what Mark and I have been, and Rob and Scott have been talking, trying to talk to Suzie and Gal about, is the idea of getting better information about these things.
Great.
You know, so the idea would be that hopefully, there's a better flow of information, and if, you know, some proposal came up that, you know, we wanted to weigh in on, we'd have the opportunity to weigh in on it, so...
Wonderful. Thank you for making sure that happens.
I don't think...
Or try.
Trying to.
I don't think kids would want to walk a greater distance...
I agree.
For the same library.
Oh, right. It would have to have something.
All right, if it was spectacular, maybe they would.
Right. So that's...
Yeah, so let's cross that proverbial bridge that we get to it.
That's what they had talked about, a lot more programming.
Not at 10 o'clock hypothetically.
Gotcha, for sure.
I just wanted to add to that, that, you know, there is a building being built around South Eighth, South Seventh, that is a teen recreation center, I believe, that's the plan.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't think that that would have anything to do with a future library plan.
No.
Yeah, no.
Right.
Okay. Ruth's not here to talk to us about CPAC. Oh, we still have Sharice's name on there for Parents of Students of Color. There's a bit of an oversight, we'll need to make sure that's, safe for next time.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, they'll be meeting Wednesday, so I'll have an update the next meeting.
Okay. Ann, anything from Human Relations Committee?
Not too much. They met last Wednesday. I was not present, but I have the minutes here. As we've discussed before, they're running an occasional book club series. The next one will be on March 29th. I'm realizing here that I don't know where it is, possibly the library, possibly Borough Hall. But if anyone is interested, you can go to the Facebook page for the, and search for, or go to Facebook and search for Highland Park Human Relations Commission. You'll get a page of the commission, it'll have all the details. But anyway, on March 29th, at the location that I am not sure about, they'll be discussing white rage, and Lucinda Holt is going to be, I think, leading the discussion. Let me see. There was another, I realize my notes here are not as clear as they could be. There is another interesting event happening on April 15th at the library. The Human Relations Commission, I guess, is, I'm not sure what their role is. Maybe they're just advertising it, maybe they're cosponsoring it. But an author named Jerry Zhang is going to be there reading a new children's book, which, although it is not, Mr. Zhang says it's not about Asian culture, it does feature a strong Asian-American heroine, so that might be of interest to people. And I, of course, realize as I'm saying this, I don't know what the age group is for this book. But if you're interested, April 15th, Sunday, at the library, 1:30, check it out. And I believe that, yeah, that's it for directly school-relevant items. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark, anything from Board of Health?
Yeah, we met the February 8th. I'll give you the short version. The student reps and a number of the members of the Board of Health were very interested in the middle school and high school health, sex ed, and mental health curriculums and action. And I discussed with Scott, and just to be brief about it, we are rewriting the, or writing the curriculum, the health curriculum, middle school and high school, and the, the students and some of the members who've had students in the high school years past, talked very highly of this teen pep, teen pep program, which is a curriculum for high school health, and strongly urged us to be looking at that as a model curriculum, it's used around the state, which died, as many other things did around here, about five years ago, if you get the drift. And so, we, I've, again, talked to Scott about it, and hopefully, we'll take that up and be looking at that as an appropriate, appropriate standard curriculum for the high school.
So the good news is, we, we are scheduled to write middle and high school health, rewrite health curriculum, Monday, the 19th of March, Thursday, the 22nd, Friday, the 23rd. And at 1:00, Elizabeth Azamoah, who ran the teen pep program, is going to be sitting in with those writers from 1:00 to 2:30, to see how we might be able to integrate it formally into the curriculum.
Fabulous.
I just want to add two other things related to family and sex ed. I've tasked Suzie Budine, who, besides directing the ESL program and our special needs...
Yep.
...program, also works with the nurses.
Right.
And she is speaking with them about distributing condoms to students at the middle and high school who might be interested. She's got feedback from the nurses who recommended that the teen... She got feedback from the nurses who recommended that the teen center take responsibility for that approach, that, that matter, and they are now talking amongst each other about how they would proceed to do that. Now, I recognize that's not, you know, at 10 o'clock for me to throw that out there is not.
I didn't want to bring it up, I wanted to do the short version, but there's a tremendous amount of, of interest by those reps and by the members of the Board of Health in much better sex, sex, sex education through the nurses and/or through the teen center, and particularly, particularly condoms or more education. So I'd be very happy to report that back to them, that at least we're, we're taking that very seriously.
And I'll get back to the board when I have a better handle on the direction the teen center's thinking of going.
And my question would be, why wouldn't the nurse and the teen center have them available?
Exactly.
Why does it have to be an either-or?
This is what the nurses are giving us in terms of feedback, it could be a comfort level, could be what they feel is a lack of education about how to guide or coach, which the teen center folks might have based on their experiences, especially with the teen pep program.
Is it possible for us to continue the conversation with our health education staff?
Let's let the process unfold. But I agree, I agree. Yeah, we have to have other people involved before we make a hard-line decision on it.
All right, not just that it's 10 o'clock at night, but.
I think that the people who brought this up repeatedly at those meetings would be, would be pleased if there were someplace in our school system where education and materials were available to them. That's, that's really the point.
Not too much to ask.
Both, both of those things.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be too much to ask.
The teen pep, it used to run at zero period, so kids used to come in at.
I see.
What, what time was that? Seven?
Wolves.
Something like that.
That's dedication.
But they did.
Oh, it was early.
Yeah, it was early, they did, they did it.
The right subject will get you out of bed.
Yep.
And a few condoms.
Those kids, yes.
All right, moving on.
After hours, bored after hours.
Rob, do you have anything for us for the green team?
I don't have any.
I'm sorry, Mark, were you done? I'm sorry.
I am done. I'm finished.
I don't have anything new.
John's first meeting, everyone, behave, come on.
There you go. Nothing new on the green team, but I am still looking for the minutes. Did you get the minutes from January 20th? Okay, so I'm still waiting for the minutes from the last meeting sent out to everyone else. So nothing new to report though.
All right, so we'll be talking, obviously, a little later about the delegate assembly resolution, so I'll skip my, my little presentation there, since it'll be covered in old business. And so that brings us back to you, Rob.
The last meeting was February 13th. I wasn't able to attend, that was run by Jonathan Bush, it was about crisis management. The next meeting is the March 7th one that you sent the reminder about, hopefully there's some people on that, because that's the unsung heroes.
Yeah, Ruth had actually expressed interest in going also, but then I realized, Scott, that we probably have to RSVP for me and Ruth, or do we just have enough spots for all of us? Scott?
Oh, so sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Rob just brought up the.
March 7th.
Yes, thank you, March 7th, student recognition thing. It's just me and Ruth that were available to go. Do we need to, what do we need to do?
I'll RSVP, as long as you can give me those names.
Okay, it's just me and Ruth.
By email?
Yeah.
All right, I'll just, you know what, I'll just email Julia to Hurst.
Okay.
Take care of that. Apologies.
No, no worries. Okay, so I don't have anything in particular tonight for my president's report, so the only, we have on the agenda, delegate, the delegate assembly resolution, and then we're adding the DPR.
Correct.
Did I get that acronym right? I'm always afraid I'll get them.
Yeah.
All right. So what language do you want to add for the? Do you have?
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the submission of the CUSAC District Performance Report to the New Jersey Department of Education.
Okay. Alrighty, and that was on our agenda last time, just didn't get moved forward, so this isn't something new, it was just a, an oversight, not putting it on there.
Well, is this the DPR report that had the, we were wondering about the one column where it was like, we looked like we scored 82 out of 164.
Yes.
And now we're really scoring like 83 out of 100?
Yes.
Okay.
All under control.
Great.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the delegate assembly resolution? We went over it in depth last week. We don't need to do it again at 10 o'clock at night if everybody's okay with it? Okay, no? No nagging questions have come up in the last two weeks?
I'll sleep fine.
Okay, good. And then we have the DPR, so can we just, can I just move both of those at once, Linda?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to do it myself. I'm going to move A and B under old business.
I'll second.
Second.
Oh, she beat you to it, Rob.
Whatever you want.
Very well.
Is there any discussion? Nope, seeing none. Linda, could we have a roll call? Mr. Marusti? Yes. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Anybody have anything they want to add for new business?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So after the safety committee meets, will you be reporting back to us about anything that's, any changes that will be happening with the school?
Sure. I don't anticipate any major changes. I had a chance to meet with the leadership team right after the event, and a lot of what we have to do is to be more consistent implementing the things we've had in practice.
Okay.
But I'll definitely report back.
Thank you. Great, anybody else have anything?
You know, I had one, this is new business we're on?
Yes.
Okay, new business, sorry, I'll be really quick. I went to the open house for the Fuse, Fuse program at Bartle, it was, it was fantastic. There was discussion, it was Dr. Nicosia and a bunch, and several other people, teachers, a teacher, some community members. There's a lot of discussion about how to sort of retain and strengthen our middle school makerspace program now that we have a really good thing going at Bartle, so I would anticipate there'll be lots of suggestions coming in about that and recommendations. Somebody who, there was a professor there, a physics professor from Rutgers, I'm so sorry, I don't have his name here and I've, I've just forgotten it. He expressed some concern or some interest in seeing if Highland Park wanted to get involved in the, I'm not sure if it's the Westinghouse Science Fair now, or the Intel